A meeting of the Township of Precipiny Troy Hills Planning Board for Monday, July 8, 2024 at 7:30 PM. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6 at SEC of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Would you call the roll, please?
Mr. DeDiche.
Yeah.
Mr. DiPiero.
Here.
Mr. Mealy.
Here.
Mr. Math.
Present.
Mr. Napolitano.
Here.
Mr. Shaw.
Here.
Mr. Stanzial.
Here.
Chairman Dinsmore.
Here.
We also have our board planner, Ms. Winter, our board attorney, Ms. Steinle, and our board engineer, Mr. Canziano.
All right, if we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the Constitution of the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. All right, is there any... This meeting is open to the general public. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak to us on a topic that is not on our agenda for tonight? Hearing and seeing none. We have two items of business on our agenda. Should we go?
I would do the referral first, get it over with, because are you going to cut, you know?
That's true. All right. Our first item of business is the referral from the council to conduct a preliminary redevelopment investigation of 169 Lackawanna Avenue, Block 136, Lot 33, Zone SED 5A. All right, we've got the material hiding in our packet. Who wishes to speak to this?
So, this resolution is requesting that the planning board prepare... Have our planner prepare the preliminary investigation where we do the notice and have a hearing on the study to determine... To make recommendations to the council as to whether this property should be... Would qualify as an area in need of redevelopment. So, our planner has, in the past, prepared a presentation, a map, and done a presentation before the board. So, that's what this is asking us to authorize.
All right.
So, we're just making a recommendation to authorize the study?
Yes.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Barbario.
Yes.
DeDiche.
Yes.
DiPiero.
Yes.
Nealy.
Yes.
Math.
Yes.
Napolitano.
Yes.
Shaw.
Yes.
Stanzial.
Yes.
All right, so that was quick. Next item on our agenda is application number 24:506, 20-30 Lanodecks Urban Renewal LLC, 20-30 Lanodecks West, Block 226, Lots 3 and 3.2, Zone ROL. Preliminary and final major site plan, major soil moving permit for construction of a warehouse with office space, loading docks, drive-in ramps, trash compactor bay, and parking.
Ready for me, Mr. Chairman?
I hope so.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, board professionals, and the public. John Iglesino here on behalf of the applicant, 20-30 Lanodecks LLC. This application seeks preliminary and final site plan approval for a warehouse at 20-30 Lanodecks West, otherwise known as Lots 3 and 3.2, and Block 226. The hearings on this application commenced on May 20th. That evening, the board heard testimony from Dan Miola from Langin Engineering with respect to civil engineering. The board also heard testimony from Ben Muir, the project sound expert. Mr. Muir answered all questions from the board, board professionals, and the public. The meeting was carried to June 3rd. On June 3rd, the board did not hear further testimony, but did carry the hearing to June 10th with no further notice to the public. At the June 10th meeting, the board heard testimony from John Coty of Langin with respect to civil engineering. Specifically, the board heard testimony as to why the project must be designed as it is. Mr. Coty also testified as to the sidewalks along Precipiny Road, the need for the water tank pump house, and the turning radius at the entrance to the property. Mr. Coty addressed all questions from the board, the board professionals, and the public. That evening, the board also heard testimony from the project architect, Kyle Ferrier. He also answered all questions from the board, board professionals, and the public. Lastly, at the June 10th hearing, you also heard testimony from the project traffic expert, Alan Lothian. Mr. Lothian provided his affirmative testimony, and he answered multiple questions from the public. However, given the lateness of the evening, the chairman asked us to bring Mr. Lothian back to answer additional questions from the public. I would like to emphasize additional questions with regard to traffic. Couple points with respect to traffic. Precipiny is a county road. Precipiny Road is a county road. As such, it is Morris County and not the board, respectfully, that has jurisdiction with regard to Precipiny Road. Point one. Point two is that even if the board did have jurisdiction of Precipiny Road, traffic volume, we heard a lot about that at the last meeting, in and of itself, is not the basis to deny the application. I pointed to the Duncan Donuts case and a host of other cases that stand for the basic proposition of law. The traffic volume is not a basis to deny an application that is for permitted use. And that is the Duncan Donuts case, Duncan Donuts, the North Brunswick Planning Board. That's an appellate division case that goes back to 1984, wherein the appellate division held that planning boards lack power to deny a site plan application because of off-site traffic conditions. And that is the seminal case, and that is the law in that regard. Obviously, here, the use is permitted under the redevelopment plan, which was the legislative decision made by the council in unanimously approving this redevelopment plan. While the applicant wants to be respectful in terms of questions, we ask that the questions not be repetitive to those already asked and answered, and the questions be relevant to the board's authority in the application. Our only other witness this evening is the project planner, Richard Feffield. And a couple of things have occurred, Mr. Chairman, actually, of members of the board since the last meeting, which I think they mentioned. First of all, we did receive a letter from the Highlands Council regarding this application dated June 18th. And we responded to that letter by letter dated June 28th. The letter did determine that there is consistency here with the Highlands, and the letter from the Highlands posed five conditions, four of which the applicant has consented to, the fifth of which the applicant responded to the Highlands letter by letter dated June 28th from me. There's been some discussions with the Highlands, and this afternoon, we received an email from the Highlands Council, which hopefully you've received, but came in this afternoon, and I don't know whether you received it or you didn't. But basically, the Highlands Council has said that the contents of my letter of June 28th are satisfactory. The condition specifically, the condition five was actually two conditions. One was the Highlands Council had initially raised questions with regard to the number of bays that are being proposed. They backed off of that entirely. The other issue raised was the amount of parking for the site. We exceed the minimum number of parking spaces under the redevelopment plan, but we don't, you know, so we don't need a variance, we don't need a deviation from this board. We're compliant with the redevelopment plan. The Highlands Council, in an effort to seek impervious coverage, in the first instance, wanted us to maintain the minimum number of parking spaces to minimize impervious coverage, but has since agreed to a banked parking concept. And this is what the letter confirms that you received this afternoon, indicating that if the board approves the project, it would approve the plans, there would be agreement by the applicant to build the project with the minimum number of parking spaces needed to comply with your redevelopment plan. But that, if there was a need, which we anticipate there will be, to expand the parking lot consistent with the plans approved, that we would have the absolute right to do that without having to go back to the Highlands Council or back to the planning board. So, that's how the bank parking compromise solution was presented and accepted by the Highlands Council. Okay? And that's confirmed in the email that you received this afternoon from the Highlands Council. So, lastly, earlier today, we received a letter of interpretation from the New Jersey DEP confirming Langin Engineering's opinion with regard to the wetlands delineation on the site. So, that is no longer an open issue. We have the letter of interpretation, and it acknowledges and agrees with the submission that was made by Langin Engineering. So, with that backdrop for this evening, we have Mr. Lothian here for additional questions from the public.
And I just want to mark for the record, the letter... The letters from the Highlands and back and forth will do... The June 18th letter is Exhibit 15, A15. The response will be... From June 28th will be A16. The letter... The email back dated today will be A17, and then the DEP letter will be A18.
Okay. Do you have anything you wish?
No, just as Mr. Iglesino said, we've received all those documents and confirmation from the Highlands that they're in agreement with the proposal regarding the bank parking.
Mr. Canziano, the letters make sense to you?
Yeah, I reviewed them. As represented, they are.
I figured, Mr. Math, you seem to have a question before we...
No.
No.
I'm sorry?
That was my hand.
That was your hand. Michael?
We have a lot of people here tonight that didn't hear all the testimony previously. Sean, is there any way we could highlight why we... Why the building was oriented that way with the truck terminals?
I'm not able to provide that testimony. And, you know, candidly...
Kind of raise all the questions if you can. If somebody can highlight it now, at least they'll hear why.
Well, we... Here's my problem. I'll be quite candid with you. This is now, you know, we're into hearing full night number three. We did this at length at the last meeting. That hearing has been posted and online since the hearing. I rewatched it last night. It's there. Anybody who wants to see or hear why, it's there. It's online. Candidly, a lot of the questions last time were just not relevant to the application. And if I bring Mr. Coty up, I'm just never going to finish. I'll be perfectly honest with you, because as soon as I bring him up, then he's going to be subject to cross-examination, and we're just never going to get through with this application. Certainly encourage folks to watch the prior meeting online. I think that was a very... Mr. Coty gave a very thorough presentation with regard to the design features of the property and why it has to be designed the way it is. He also gave testimony with regard to the need for the water tank and the pump house. He also gave a lot of testimony with regard to the radius, and he also gave a lot of testimony with regard to the sidewalks, which are matters that I'll get into, you know, later on in terms of, well, some other news, right? So, we have had dialogue with Morris County, and it appears there is a willingness for the county to work with us in terms of putting in the sidewalk along Precipiny Road. Applicant, as I told you, represented last time. If the county agreed to doing that, we would agree to do it. It's the county's jurisdiction. We reached out to the county, and there's a willingness to do that. We're happy to do it. And we will work with Mr. Canziano as well to oversee it, to make sure that the board's interests are represented in that regard. So, I think that's positive from the board's perspective. The same with regard to the turning radius coming into the property. Mr. Canziano had indicated he wanted to widen that a little bit, recognizing the infrastructure work that had already been done there in connection with the project across the street. I can represent to the board that the county has indicated a willingness to also work with us in that regard. Not that the county thinks any of that is necessary, but we want to be, you know, respectful of the board's opinions and Mr. Canziano's opinions, and so we're going to work with the county to make that wider and, quote-unquote, you know, make it wider. So, the sidewalks and the radiuses, I think the board will be pleased with the outcome of that. But I don't want to bring Mr. Coty back up again and just redo what we've already done. The public certainly has the opportunity and has had the opportunity to either be here that evening or to review those... Review that meeting.
Okay. Thought I would try.
All right, what we're doing at this time is we're continuing the questioning of this witness on the testimony that he gave the last time on traffic.
Correct. He was in the middle of answering questions, so he's not providing any further testimony tonight. Our case is in with regard to traffic, again, with the understanding that this is a county road, and, you know, off-site conditions with regard to traffic are really not... Even if they were a municipal road, are really not for... Really not relevant to the board's decision, but nevertheless, there were people with folks with questions. We want to hear them, and Mr. Lothian is here to answer those questions tonight.
Okay, I am going to summarize where we are at this stage. We're going to have questions for this witness at this time from the public. This is not a time to make a statement. This is not a time to present a case. This is a time to ask questions, to solicit information that is important to you or important to your... To the case itself. Later, there will be another witness for the applicant. You'll have a chance to question that witness on their testimony at that time. Following that will be a period of time when the public will be allowed to make statements or make a case or otherwise object or indeed support the application. So, you'll have plenty of time at that point to state your true feelings or what you believe is important for us to consider at that time. Now is the time for questions of this witness at this time. We're hoping we don't get a lot of duplicative questions, because we've heard a lot of questions so far. But if you want to ask a question of this witness, please, you can come forward, give us your name and your address, and ask your question. All right, and if you can make room for the questions?
The microphone right there.
And there's a...
Julia Peterson.
Is that on?
Lift the little thing up. There's a little...
This thing?
Yeah.
Push it up?
Right, if you push it down.
There it is. Julia Peterson, 25, Old Precipiny Road. The traffic specialist, you mentioned considering traffic from the park condos across the street.
Yeah.
Yeah. But you didn't say how you considered it or what data was used. So, can you tell us how you considered it and what numbers you used?
We used volumes from the approved traffic impact study for the... The phase that was approved for that.
The approved, okay. And you said that it was... The traffic study was conservative in estimating truck traffic. If the actual type of warehouse is unknown, use is unknown, how do you know it was being... You were being conservative.
So, when I said conserv... When I said... It is on. Okay. When I said conservative, it's based on the rates associated with warehousing. So, what we looked at was the facility peak hour estimates on top of the street peak hour.
Okay.
So, whereas during the street peak hour, 7 to 9, 4 to 6, if you use those rates for that time period, it may be like... It may be 25 trips. We looked at it based on what the facility could generate, which was the 43 and... 44 and 41 trips.
Okay.
And with the truck trips, it's... So, it's eight truck trips that we analyzed, but it would be a fraction of that during the street peak hours.
And this may or may not be a question you can answer as a traffic that... Is the... Is the warehouse going to adhere to air quality standards that the town sets?
Yeah, objection. That's... Not only is that not a question for this witness, but it's not a question for the board. Municipalities do not have the power under the law to regulate air emissions standards and so forth. There are other layers of government that do that.
Okay, so there's no... There's no standards for that?
I'm just saying that, number one, it's just not an appropriate question for a traffic engineer. So, you'd be objection at that.
Is an expert going to come that that will be an appropriate question?
No, there will be a general... There will be an omnibus provision in the resolution, I'm sure, that will say and require the applicant to comply with all relevant federal, state, county, local laws, rules, and regulations and the like, so that if any part of the operations of this building, whether it be air emissions or anything else violates any of those regulations, then, you know, that would subject the applicant to penalties.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else that has questions on this with... From this witness and this testimony at this time?
Hello, Lindewims, 132 Marcella Road, Precipiny. I have a question regarding the trucks coming off of 287 on 2 Precipiny Road. If these tractor trailers are as large as tractor trailers usually are, I don't know how many feet they are, if there's two of them, I'm not even sure that two of them in a row are going to be off of 287 when they're coming off of 287, when they're coming up to the light, because if there's cars, there's not many cars that can be bumper-to-bumper before they turn. So, I'm not sure if... I mean, that's not the direct... You know, that's not directly the actual building, but it's the access coming off of 287 for all these large number of trucks.
So, what I can say is 287 is the national truck network, and Precipiny Road, which is County Group 511, is part of the New Jersey Access Truck Network. So, it... That is... It's designed to accommodate those tractor trailers along that route for those connections to the national network.
Right, but in within Lake Precipiny, there's only a very small number of businesses that are getting maybe a couple of trucks. They're not getting 20 trucks coming in, you know, 24 hours a day with all of these large trucks and a high number going to these 20 bays that they're proposing.
We'll just have to ask you to... This is just a question.
Right.
Yep. So, if you have a question about that.
Okay. And also, I would just like to just consider that many seniors who have lived in Lake Precipiny...
You'll have time to bring up your comments. I'm sorry. We're just trying to keep it streamlined. Thank you.
Nicholas Homiak, 26 O'Naida Avenue, Lake Hiawatha. Are you familiar with the 12-page Highlands consistency report?
Objection. This is a traffic witness, unless there's a traffic question.
Yes, and the consistency report should have an element of traffic in the 12-page report.
I don't know that it did or it didn't. I don't recall seeing it, but the Highlands Council, as I indicated, issued a consistency determination by letter dated June 18th. There were five conditions. I don't recall the other four where the applicant agreed to comply with whatever those other four were. The fifth condition were the two conditions regarding the bank parking and the bays, which we discussed. So, Mr. Homiak, the Highlands Council has weighed in on this application, and we're just not going to go any further with that.
Have you seen the 12-page consistency report? Anyone on this board?
I haven't studied it.
But you've seen it?
Yeah.
12 pages?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. You said that... I remember hearing, and I wrote it down, says the expert, I take it was you, stated 100 trips an hour are considered excessive. And then you also said 260 daily trips or 45 and 41 trips at various times. So, that's kind of wishy-washy or ambiguous, but the 100 trips, is that a county road, state road, a local road?
So, the 100 trips... 100 trips is deemed significant. So, that is when you would look at that location as a study location in the eyes of the New Jersey Department of Transportation, or ITU also references.
For all roads or that area in particular?
Yes, for all roads. We are at 44 and 41, and actually, our relative impact when compared to the office that's already on the site is in the negative. So, it's negative 41 and negative 40 during those peak hours. So, even based on the township ordinance with respect to traffic impact studies, we technically wouldn't need to do a traffic study because we have a negative impact, but we did a traffic impact study to show the impacts with the reoccupancy and with the proposed warehouse in addition to a condition where neither are on the road, and we show no significant impacts.
And you're saying there's no element to this traffic study have all to deal with air quality or safety concerns?
Again, objection to the question. This witness is not testifying as to air quality.
They've agreed, Mr. Homiak, to follow all the rules and regulations of higher authorities. We don't have purview over this.
And there's... So, you would have to say that these... In your criteria for this warehouse, that you did not consider public health or safety concerns?
Again, objection.
I think you're characterizing something that is answered in their response, that they will comply with all of the state, federal, and local regulations.
So, they're allowed to... They'll be allowed to pollute the air?
No, that's not what they said.
Well, that's what's going to happen. All right. All right, that's...
And electric... Or any of these vehicles, even for local delivery, will they be electric? Will they be like Amazon-type vehicles? Or they be diesel, regular gasoline engines?
That would be tenant-dependent. I can't answer that.
Okay.
That would be tenant-dependent.
Not a question that the witnesses qualified to answer. Okay, all right.
And my last question would just be, you as a traffic expert, are you familiar with the policy standards for warehousing in the New Jersey Highlands?
I'm familiar with the document, yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Our other members of the public, does anybody else have a question to ask of this witness on this testimony?
Paul Verja, 69 Allentown Road. I have two questions. One question is that will there ever be that trucks will take short curbs to come through Allentown Road to get to the 80 East and 287 because it's right behind... I don't know, like maybe special events like road closures, inclement weathers, I don't know, too much traffic, cutting... What do you have to say about that?
Trucks are specifically restricted from... Trucks are specifically restricted from going through Lake Persippany.
So we, we are not to see the trucks coming down on Allentown Road to get to 80 East?
Exactly, no trucks should be going in that route.
Okay.
So let me ask a follow-up. What restricts the trucks? You said they're legally restricted, what is it that restricts the trucks?
It's based on ordinance.
So there's a, there's a local ordinance?
Yes.
Okay.
So if, if, if there are trucks that are traveling down Allentown Road that are violating the local ordinance, then you would call the township because that becomes an enforcement issue?
Okay, will your trucks have a name on the, so that we know that it's your truck to make a complaint?
No, because there's going to be tenants...
You asked a question, I didn't answer.
He's the traffic expert, that's not a traffic question. So, so the answer is no, because there's going to be multi-tenants there, so you won't be able to do that, but if, if you notice trucks, whether they're affiliated with this site or any other site, if there are trucks traveling down Allentown Road that shouldn't be, my suggestion would be to call the township so that they can implement enforcement mechanisms to ensure that that stops, because that shouldn't be happening.
Occasionally, the trucks come down to deliver furnitures and appliances, they don't have name on it, I can't be like stopping and stop the residents' products coming and being delivered.
That, that's not what this application is about.
Anyway, moving forward, my next question is, when you did the study for the park resident, you incorporated their study into your study to know the amount of traffic coming out of the, coming from a park area. My question is, the park residents have not yet been, nobody's living there right now. Suddenly, the school buses, when the people start living there, the school buses will start going to pick up students. My question is, during the peak time, you said the conservatively you'll have eight trucks crossing that section. How, so there, there are very good chances that one or two buses will be at the section during, one of your truck is there. What are the safety measures? I, I'm asking to you, I know it may not be your question, but what are the safety measures taken specifically for the inclement weather, too heavy, too heavy traffic and like snow-covered roads and stuff like that, or too much rain?
It's, it's just like anywhere on the public roadway network, there, there are a mix of passenger cars, trucks, buses, that's typical for any location specifically along Persippany Road. So the intersection is designed, and we have discussed with the county, additional improvements to the intersection to facilitate those truck movements.
Could you tell us what are these additional measures being taken to improve that section? Because I'm sure those, those residence, the park residents are not there, would have hoped that they would be present today to say something. Unfortunately for them to not be here because they, they did not know about it. But, yes, so if you could please mention...
Specifically, we're, we're looking at improving the radius on the southbound approach to the intersection for right turns into Landex Plaza, and the intersection already, the remainder is designed to accommodate tractor trailers, well, accommodate all design vehicles.
My, my main concern is heavy rain and snow-covered roads. Turning could slip the truck and the school bus being there is what my main concern is. Do you have anything to say about that?
Well, yeah, I guess, I would object to the question because this is a traffic expert, not a driver safety expert, and, you know, I don't know how to account for weather conditions.
Because he's a traffic expert, so he takes in account of inclement weather, therefore he's expert to know when a weather conditions are bad or good, what can...
I, I'm not sure I answered, I, I, if you can answer the question, answer it, if you can't, don't. I, I don't really know what to do with that.
I could say that it's designed to accommodate the tractor trailers on those roads.
Are there other members of the public who have questions of this witness on this testimony?
129 Marmora Road, Irina Clem. I have a question. I was drove today at 6:00 PM home, and I couldn't make left turn on Allentown Road. I wait like two red lights. And my question is, we know that the truck is 72 feet long, and truck is moving so slow back on the local roads, so how you count, like, how many cars can be behind the truck or after truck before the, the red lights?
I'm, I'm not sure I understand the question.
Back on the road, so we have a truck, he's 70, 72 feet long probably, yeah, the whole truck?
Yeah.
Yeah, how many cars can be like between the, the lights, between the lights on the road? Because like, we know the truck moving so fast, so when the lights turn green, truck will move and the other car will wait again, the, the red lights.
Well, we didn't analyze the intersection of Allentown Road.
The truck, they, they moving so slow, so probably we will have traffic. How about delay? If the warehouse will be not like allow trucks to, to do on time, so we have, we will have definitely some delay on the, on the road.
So, there's already trucks on Persippany Road, as I identified before, it is a New Jersey Access Route for trucks, and what we're, what we're looking at on the conservative side is one truck trip every 15 minutes on average.
How about if the warehouse will have any delay? It's possible, because we know like, nobody, there, there will be some delay on, on the warehouse, and it's going to be like two trucks on the road at the one time.
That could happen, but it's...
How often, how often this will happen, especially like, I don't know, season holiday or something, we will have like two or more trucks in one time on the road? And it's not like much space for, for that long truck on that road.
Well, there, there's, there's space between the intersection, I, I don't know exactly the distance between...
There's like two lines, and then they became in the one line.
Yes, well, if you can't answer the question, say you can't answer the question.
All right.
Okay, the next one, my, next my question is, you said that there's restrictions, that they will never will use the local roads. Like this week, I count on the Marmora Road, like five trucks, they just cross by the Marmora.
Well, again...
And we have this, we have the sign that the truck is not allowed on the Marmora Road, but they cross by. One truck, he make a return on his...
Mr. Chairman, I, I have to object. In the testimony at this time, you're making a case rather than asking a specific question.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, like, yeah, I know, now we know that there's the sign is restriction, so they probably will not go, but I'm see, I'm live there, and I see the trucks coming by all the time.
I would say that this question was already asked and answered, that if you see these trucks in your neighborhood on a local roads and they're not making a local delivery, you have to call the town because it's an enforcement issue.
But, yeah, when we will have this warehouse next to our houses, so we will see this so often, so we, what we can do, we just, we'll call each time when we see this truck.
That's, that's what, the planning board doesn't have an enforcement arm, that's the town's job, so if you see a problem, you call the town, maybe if they get a lot of calls, they'll post a police officer there to make sure that something doesn't happen.
That's what I'm trying to do, I'm just trying...
But that's not, that's not the planning board's role at this point.
Yeah, because, you know, I'm, I'm just seeing this problem before, we don't have a warehouse right now.
This is not relevant to the application.
It is relevant.
It's not relevant.
Because it's a traffic, we, we don't have warehouse.
But it's not a question to this person at this time, he's basically asked, he asked a question, and he's answered it. Do we have somebody else who wishes to ask a question of this witness on this testimony at this time? Ms. Perzicki, good to see you.
Good to see everybody too. Mary Perzicki, I used to live in Lake Persippany, but now I live someplace else, unfortunately. But anyhow, my question is, is why didn't they do a traffic study for Allentown and Persippany Road since it has been, been, it became, four cars at a time could only get through? And not only that, on that corner, you have a traffic, a crossing guard, okay? And you have on Persippany Road, oh, quite a few stops for school buses, for, for children standing on the corners on Persippany Road to get their buses. And that intersection has always been a problem, and I don't understand why, since you're going to put all these extra tractor trailers on the road, that that was not considered, since it's not even, what is it, about a quarter of a mile away from where your warehouse development is going?
So, as I, as I stated before, the, we looked at in excess of what we needed to look at based on, based on the requirements of the township. Allentown wasn't a study location specifically because they're reducing the amount of traffic through that intersection with the, with the redevelopment of the site from an office to a warehouse.
You, you're not kidding, I cannot understand that one. But anyhow, how many people are going to be working at the, at the warehouse that is going to be using, say that, more than likely, Persippany Road to get in and out of there? How many cars will be coming just from the employees?
Again, we, we looked at the facility peak on the street peak and passenger cars, you're looking at 26 entering and 10 exiting in the morning peak hour.
Where is that, on, by Landex West?
That's at the signal.
That's at the signal? At the, what signal, the one...
Landex Plaza West.
Landex Plaza West, because, and that, does that...
And they would disperse north and south on Persippany Road.
Okay, did you take into consideration the, the other office building and what traffic comes in and out of there?
We did existing traffic counts at the intersection, yes.
You still didn't tell me, how many, how many employees will there be in that warehouse that we know is going to be coming in and out with cars?
We don't have a specific number of employees at this time, it's a speculative warehouse.
It's a speculative warehouse, so all of these statements then is based on speculation of...
Objection to the question, this is, this is badgering the witness to parking requirements and the redevelopment plan, which are adhered to, as I indicated at the beginning of the meeting, in response to the Highlands letter, the applicant has agreed to limit the number of parking spaces to the minimum requirement under the redevelopment plan, and then may, based upon need, expand to the number that's being applied for here. That, that relates, parking spaces relate to the number of cars. People carpool, people use public transportation, et cetera. This witness is not qualified to answer questions with regard to how many employees is, is able to answer questions with regard to parking standards being complied with.
Well, I still think that children who use that road and that crossing area there should be considered.
Mr. Homiak, you've got another question?
Yes. Nick Homiak, 26 Oneida, Lake Hiawatha. Can you tell me, or did you, or do you know who did comply with a quantitative health risk assessment in accordance with NJD Division of Air Quality Technical Manual 1003?
Objection, objection, objection.
That's not, that's not this witness's purview, that's not our purview.
It has to do with traffic and emissions.
Objection.
You want...
Objection.
I'll have to read the whole paragraph then at the end.
As we previously explained, the applicant, the board, planning board does not have jurisdiction over air quality standards, so we can't say this standard, that standard. The applicant, it's the applicant's responsibility to comply with the air quality standards that are set by the federal government, state government, et cetera.
Fully analyze impacts from truck trips.
Objection, this is getting to be badgering and a complete, it's prejudicial to the applicant to answer the question.
Not ours.
Good luck.
All right, there we go. Are there other members of the public who have questions of this witness on this testimony?
Hi, Christine Espinoza, 131 Marmora Road. Please let me know if you're qualified for any of these questions, and if not, who. One is that you had mentioned that there are many trucks on Persippany Road already, but on our side of town, there's not as many as the other side near Jefferson Road. So was your study done in between, like, Littleton and 287 specifically?
Yeah, we counted the intersection of Persippany Road and Landex Plaza West slash Parkley.
The other question is, will you make a traffic route for the tenants to comply with, or will another traffic engineer do that? Is that something you guys do?
Well, as I stated before, the Persippany Road is a New Jersey Access Truck Route already, and Littleton to the west of Persippany Road, Persippany Road as goes towards 46, 46 is, that's, those are all part of the New Jersey Access Network, and what trucks, trucks are specifically supposed to go to the New Jersey Access Network and to the national network, so that, that's, that's on the...
So is the answer to the question, though?
No, we will not be preparing.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm, I only ask that because you had mentioned to, earlier, that people are not allowed, well, the trucks are not allowed to go through an ordinance down Allentown Road, you know that, but how are they supposed to know that?
Not a question for this witness.
Okay, who...
Well, truck restriction...
It's not, not a question for this witness, you know, we're, neither the applicant, the applicant is not responsible for the enforcement of local ordinances on roads that are off premises, so it's not...
But he can finish what he was just going to say?
If he has anything further to answer, he can, but the answer is, we're, we're nothing.
It may be helpful to explain it in your own words if the chairman so desires to, to request.
No, there, there are truck restrictions posted on those roads that a truck is not permitted on.
So before you cut me off, just listen to the whole thing, and then you can say, "No."
Mr. Chairman, it's going to be a late night tonight.
No, it's quick, it's just that...
No, it's not, it'll be a late night.
So earlier with the, the loading docks, I know that that was one of the conditions with the Highlands Council, by reducing it by like 15 or so, and you had mentioned that in an email, they said it was okay? So I just wanted to know if we're going to go with the same...
First of all, this is questions for this witness.
Yeah.
What I said, I said, you can go back and listen to it on the tape.
Okay, so everything is running the same as is with the truck, traffic?
I, I'm not going to repeat myself on that again, unless the board has questions later.
The truck traffic, right, sir?
We stand by dark conservative estimates in the traffic impact study.
Okay, thank you.
Can I make one comment, Chairman, with regards to the off-site of the trucks? Because it's going to be a repetitive question that's going forward. Call the township and we will enforce our ordinance. We will ticket them, we will summon them, and we give them a violation. So if you continue to ask the same question, we will respond and we will react. We will make sure they do not go on public access roads that they're not supposed to be going on. So, I hope that clears, clears things up, we will respond and we will react immediately.
All right, are there other members of the public who have questions of this witness on this testimony at this time? Hearing and seeing none.
My name is Elliot Maruga, I am the Policy and Communications Director of the New Jersey Highlands Coalition, we're in, we're in Booton, and Mr. Engasino... And Mr. Inglisino, I'd like to ask a question regarding condition number five of the Highlands Council. Now, if you answered this, and I missed it, sorry. If you don't want to answer it again, that's fine. But you say that, is it that you are maintaining the number of parking spaces and loading docks that were originally proposed because you satisfied their condition that there is an actual demonstrated need for additional spaces? And if so, you explain what that-
Mr. Maruga, are you here tonight on behalf of the Highlands Commission?
I am here tonight on behalf of the New Jersey Highlands Coalition.
Oh, New Jersey Highlands Coalition?
Yes.
Not on behalf of the Highlands Council?
Correct.
Okay. What I indicated was that, first of all, my letter is self-explanatory, so I'll leave you to that.
I've not seen your letter.
So, basically, condition number five had two conditions within one. One was with regard to the number of bays. There was agreement from the Highlands Council not to ask the applicant to change the number of bays. The next condition in number five related to the number of parking spaces. And what was agreed to, as confirmed this afternoon in an email from the Highlands Council, was that the applicant would build the minimum number of parking spaces required under the redevelopment plan, and it would bank the additional spaces being applied for, so that if the need requires, if there's a business need for more parking, the applicant would have the ability to build that parking at that time without going back to this board or the Highlands Council.
So, they'll be approved, they won't be built originally, but if there's a need for them, they can be built-
Correct.
-without further approval?
Correct.
And the condition five says, similarly, the applicant proposes 23 loading spaces, 15 more than required by local ordinance. That has, has that been addressed?
As I indicated, the Highlands Council has rescinded that requirement.
And could you share that email? Is that a public document?
It is. Mr. Jolie has it.
Okay. I will, I guess I have to open that?
That will be exhibit A 17.
Exhibit A 17. Thank you.
All right. Other members of the public who have questions of this witness on this testimony at this time?
129 Marmora Road, Arena Claim. I have a question about this additional parking lot. So, does that mean like when you will need more parking lots, and this time that you will build additional ones, so the trucks will be parked on the quick check parking? Or what they will be parked? Before you will build additional parking lots? Because like I think that the trucks, they will definitely park on the quick check. They will use this parking lot or not? Did you include this in your study?
This is not to do with traffic.
It's about the additional parking lots.
But that has to do with cars for the employees of the warehouse, not the trucks.
How about trucks itself?
The trucks are accommodated on-site.
I don't understand the question.
So, they-
So, the conditions were with respect to the passenger car spaces-
Mm-hmm.
-where the employees are going to park. So, there's a set of those that are being thanked, that aren't being built now, that's going to be green.
So, it's just for employee, we're not talking about trucks?
Not additional trucks.
Okay. So, do you think you will have enough space for trucks itself, not employee, just trucks?
Yes.
Okay. And they will not use like, for example, quick check parking lot or some other place like to wait when it's delayed or something?
I can't speak to what they do on the outside.
So, you are sure that you will have enough space for all these trucks to park if it's some delays or you have more-
Objection. The witness is testifying with regard to traffic matters and with regard to ensuring that the site was built, was proposed in accordance with the redevelopment plan. This witness is, can't answer the behaviors of any particular truckers. So, I really don't-
Well, these are all truckers that have commercial licenses, right? And under the commercial licenses, they're supposed to follow-
Correct. Yes, they are. So, we can't, there's not questions, we can't answer behavioral questions with regard to whoever is operating a truck.
But we see that the truck drivers, they, these rules, they break the rules because they use the local rules.
It's not relevant to this application.
Again, we've, if it becomes an issue, call the township. The mayor's already indicated that the township's on-
You will have a lot of calls.
Yeah.
Other members of the public who have questions of this witness on this testimony at this time, and it's not a repeat of questions that have already been asked.
Hi, how are you? My name is Kaylee McIntosh. I'm at 16 Allentown Road. So, my question is, for the engineer, what software do you use to prepare your studies and do your topographical landscape mapping? When it comes to traffic, accidents, planned route?
So, for a traffic impact study, we use the Synchro software.
Okay. Because I am very familiar with ArcGIS. You know it. You should. It's what everybody uses, Department of Transportation, everybody. Even you guys use ArcGIS for your ordinances and everything, okay? It's very familiar.
You'll have to just narrow it to a question.
Yep. That was my question. Now, are all your studies and results available for our viewing?
They are.
Where are they available at?
Mr. Jolie has them.
Mr. Jolie?
Ms. Jolie, the board secretary.
You'll have to open them.
All right. Thank you. And we could come pick them up anytime?
Well, they have been available for public view for several months. And right in our notice to the public for this application, our notice provides to the public, which was given out to mail directly to people who live within 200 feet of the site, and published in the newspaper. It was very clear that anyone who wanted to view any of the application materials during regular business hours could come to Ms. Jolie's office and pick them up and review them.
I'm sorry.
And those materials have been available for several months.
I'm sorry. I have a very, very important job. I work for the Department of Homeland Security, and I'm a little busy. I don't really read the newspaper. So, I apologize. And I do live within 200 feet, and I didn't get that notice. So, I apologize. Now, in your master plan for Percipony, 2008, you have, again, Arc-
That's been superseded.
That is not the most recent one.
No. I'm showing you an example, okay? This is an ArcGIS map, just so everybody is aware, okay? This simple map.
Are you asking a very specific question-
Yes, I am. Please, excuse me. Now, did your data-
I can tell you not to continue.
Well, I'm part of the community, and the reason why you're sitting up there is because you're representing all of us.
I want you to ask your question.
You're supposed to be, you're supposed to be improving this town, not helping demolish it. Anyway, so, there was a prior study done that showed the amount of incidences of accidents. Did you happen to repeat that?
We did not.
Okay. Why did you not repeat that? Was it not required by the town, the ordinances? Or why was it not considered?
It was not required.
Not required? Okay. Interesting. I think that should be required, correct? Just saying. Anyway, the next one is, are you familiar with the Safeways Act? Safeways Act is for children who walk to school. The transportation of-
Objection.
This is exactly to do with this.
This is testimony now being given by the questioner. Want to ask a question, ask a question.
Well, I am asking. Are you familiar with the Safeways Act?
Well, then you started to tell them what the, you're familiar with it or you're not?
No.
Okay. It's not familiar with it.
Okay. I believe that a study should be done for the Safeways Act.
That's not a question.
Well, I'm telling you what-
So, there's time, this is time for questions of the traffic engineer only. You'll have time to make your comments, to make your objection, all of that, at a later time.
When will that be?
Once all of the testimony is in, so everyone can hear the whole case that the applicant is presenting, then at that time, the board will hear the public comments, objections, general statements, things like that. This is just for questions of the traffic testimony.
It seems like we're not going to get anything accomplished anyway based on the board and this legal counsel, so thank you.
First, I'd like to, I'd like to respond to that comment, please.
Please, Mr. Mayor.
First, when you make comments, we're not going to get anywhere because of this board. This board is a volunteer board who works for the township of Percipony Troy Hills and does its best that it can do. When you make a comment like that, I take that as being disrespectful to the board, because that's exactly what you're doing. This board comes here, dedicates their time to the township, to its residents. So, when you make comments like that, I'm going to respond to those type of comments. First of all, you were told on several occasions, ask questions to the traffic expert. And you will have time later on to ask any question you want, but every single professional has been heard.
All right. Any other questions by members of the public on this testimony at this time? Hearing and seeing none. Mr. Inglisino, if you want to present your next question.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question real quick?
Mr. Inglisino, Mr. Engineer, can we go back to, you said about the sidewalks on the funeral home side?
Yeah.
There are sidewalks along the whole other side of the street, though, and it's striped for crosswalks.
That's correct.
Don't you just need a sidewalk to lead to that, then, along your property? I think, I think that's overkill to me.
We will defer to whatever the board would like, okay? Because the comment was sidewalks along our side of the property entirely. We want to be responsive to the board.
Okay.
We agree.
I mean, it looks, the newer picture showed it's striped on all four sides, so-
We agree with you. We agree with you. We move that up to the board.
As possible, okay.
But we'll have that discussion when we come to it.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions by members of the board? No. Hearing and seeing none. Mr. Inglisino.
Thank you. I'd like to call the project planner, Ms. Rachel Fifeeld.
If you please raise your hand, do you swear from the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name, spell your name, and provide your business address for the record.
My name is Rachel Fifeeld, spelled F-I-F-I-E-L-D. I'm with Land and Engineering at 300 Campbell Drive, Percipony.
Okay. Ms. Fifeeld, if you can please provide the board with your credentials, your educational background, your place of employment, your position there, and any licenses that you possess.
Sure. So, I have a bachelor's degree in environmental science from Willamette University, and I have a master's degree in urban and regional planning from Rutgers University. I'm a professional planner, licensed in the state of New Jersey, as well as a member of the National AICP. And I'm an environmental planner with Land and Engineering. I've been there for about four years.
And you've testified before boards?
I have.
And you've been accepted as an expert in the area of planning?
I have. Most recently, West Orange, New York, and North Bergen.
Mr. Chairman, respectfully, we request that the board recognize Ms. Fifeeld as an expert in the area of planning.
Are there any questions on Ms. Fifeeld's qualifications from the board? Hearing and seeing none.
Okay. Ms. Fifeeld, there are a few deviations being requested by the applicant, correct?
Yes.
Can you please address those and provide the planning proofs to substantiate those deviations?
Yes. So, there's some relief associated with this project. So, the deviations are 7.2.3, which is the 100-foot minimum Percipony Road setback required. A 90-foot Percipony Road setback is proposed here. Under 7.2.3, one ancillary structure is permitted, and two are proposed in the form of the pump house and the water tank. Under 7.2.3, the max ancillary height is 20 feet. 40 feet is proposed for that water tank. Under Chapter 430-11A, a four-foot maximum front yard fence or wall height is permitted. 16.1 feet are proposed. Under 430-11A, a six-foot maximum side of rear yard fence or wall height is permitted, and 16.8 feet is proposed. Under 430-275H, 24-foot maximum driveway width is permitted, and 30 feet is proposed at the western driveway. Under 8.3.2B1, four parking lot trees are required and one is proposed. And in addition, under 8.2, sidewalks are required along Landex Plaza, but they're only provided from the east driveway to the intersection of Percipony Road and Landex Plaza. They're not provided west of the eastern entrance. We're also, in addition, seeking a waiver. So, under 7.3.5F, which is in the redevelopment plan, exposed flat building roofs less than maximum height are potentially visible from laboring buildings and shall be treated for aesthetics. No specific aesthetic treatment is proposed for this roof. But the NRU L permits the granting of design waivers where literal enforcement is impractical or will exact undue hardship because of the particular conditions of the site. Under Garfalo versus bringing to township, according to the waiver, is remaining within a broad knowledge and the condition of the property is satisfactory. So, here, the applicant proposes to use a neutral, light-colored roof with a high albedo for energy efficiency. The building must be substantially shielded by both the retaining walls that we're going to talk about and that our previous engineers have discussed, and by landscaping design on this site. So, while we're going to get into the specific deviations, so this 100-foot minimum Percipony Road setback is required, but we have 90 feet proposed. The building is sunk in more than 15 feet below the Percipony Road grade, minimizing that visual impact on the roadway. And the majority of the facade does meet that 100-foot setback. The area is this sort of like small little curve along Percipony Road, so the majority of the site is compliant. And then, under the section about ancillary structures, where we're proposing two, and one is permitted, that pump house and water tank work together to serve a single purpose, acting as one to improve fire safety and allow for effective fire suppression on this site. And the structures are also set together, and the aesthetic choices emphasize that they together serve a single purpose, so they act more like one structure. In addition, that 20-foot maximum ancillary structure height, while we have a 40-foot water tank proposed, that water tank height allows for effective water pressure, which is kind of the whole reason that there is proposed like additional water at this site, is for fire safety purposes. And that tank is so significantly lower than the principal structure, and also obviously lower than those banked areas above coming from Percipony Road. Under the question of the four-foot maximum front yard fence height, when we're proposing 16.1 feet, the retaining wall height minimizes site visibility from the roadway, while also allowing for internal alignment for effective site circulation here. But wall height does not impact the Percipony Road and Landex Plaza intersection with site triangles or grades for the existing sidewalk. And then, the six-foot maximum side and rear yard, on this site, while we're proposing 16.8 feet, this retaining wall height also allows for construction of stormwater basins here at the rear of this site. It allows for increased sound buffer between the proposed warehouse area and the associated circulation and surrounding uses. So, it's really kind of about buffering the site, isolating it both like from view and also, you know, from other things our previous engineer discussed, the sound wall here. And then, the conversation about the maximum driveway width, the 24 feet that's permitted, where the 30 feet are proposed here. 30 feet is the accepted industry standard for warehouse driveway width, and so this design allows for efficient and safer truck turning, as well as effective traffic flow to prevent stacking. And then, when we go on to talk about those sidewalks, sidewalk along Landex Plaza, there's sort of efficient ways to access this site as a pedestrian, which have been extensively discussed here. You know, there's a crosswalk, there's a signalized intersection, there's access onto the site. So, under the purposes of zoning, oh, wait, we've got to talk about those trees. So, there's four parking lot trees required, and we're proposing one. That parking lot is built very narrowly between that landscaped tree slope up towards Percipony Road and the warehouse building. So, it's already benefiting from shading and softening, both due to that artificial slope up to Percipony Road and the existing landscaping that is proposed on that slope. So, for purposes of zoning, under A, to encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use or development of our lands in the state in a manner which will promote the public health, safety, laws, and general welfare, this variant roof allows for the development of a compliant project use on this site. Under G, to provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of uses according to environmental requirements to meet the needs of New Jersey citizens, this deviation relief allows for the productive reuse of the site into a modern warehouse without encroaching into the significant onsite wetlands. Under I, to promote a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and good civic design arrangement, that variance- Under I, to promote a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and good civic design arrangement, that variant roof allows for maintenance of a desirable visual environment by setting the warehouse down from the surrounding areas and surrounding uses to minimize the visual impact. So under the negative criteria, there's no substantial impact on the public good. The redevelopment into a modern warehouse will contribute to an active economic use on an undermobilized site. Pump house and water tank are located to minimize visual disturbance while improving fire safety on site. Retaining wall design will support stormwater basins, as well as shield the building from view, pushing the building down in grade and splitting that cut along Persipney Road and further along the school property, are consistent with the stormwater regulations on a state level, as well as on a local level, and shield Persipney Road and the funeral home from the view of employee parking and the associated lighting. In the back, the sound barrier and wall minimizes both massing and visibility from that neighborhood property. This building alignment and distance from the roadway allows for efficient site circulation. The driveway width is consistent with industry standards and allows for efficient truck circulation. We have also efficient access for pedestrians via that signaled intersection and the proposed sidewalk that you all have been discussing. The landscape design allows for shading and softening of the paved areas while allowing an effective number of parking spaces to serve this site. And there's no substantial detriment to the redevelopment plan. The development meets the redevelopment plan area purposes. Under Goal 4.3.9, to provide for the appropriate siting and development of warehousing and other non-residential uses, for which there is a high regional demand. This is a project that with its requested relief allows for the development of a warehouse on this site. Under Goal 4.3.15, provide for appropriate aesthetics, visibility, and security. This project with a requested relief protects surrounding view sheds and aesthetics, provides minimum visibility of site operations, and reduces the visibility of the warehouse building itself. Under Goal 4.316, to the extent reasonably practical, work with the designated re developer to minimize disruption to land uses adjacent to the redevelopment area during and after construction. The project with this requested relief results in site alignment to minimize visual and sound disturbance to surrounding uses.
Does that conclude your testimony?
It does.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, just two quick points if I might. Number one is, you may recall with regard to the water tank and the pump house, that Mr. Cota testified that those are needed because the existing water supply does not support the current fire suppression need in the area. He also testified that he would be willing to meet with the township water department to see if the system could be enhanced there without the tank and the pump house, not only for benefit of this property, but also in a way that may benefit the surrounding area. So while we're asking for this relief, we are also agreeable to a condition, which I'll outline in more detail in my closing remarks, because frankly, we would prefer not to have to build the pump house and the tank if we don't have to. But we're not able to get the information needed from the water department because of Homeland Security kind of concerns, so we just haven't been able to have that meeting yet. But I'm sure that if the board approves this application with that condition, that the administration will make that information available so that we can see if we can accomplish fire suppression needs without the need for the tank or the pump house. And the only other point that I would make, and forgive me, but, you know, I am aware, I have a job to do, and I don't mean this to be antagonistic. We are seeking relief from a requirement in the redevelopment plan regarding the sidewalks, but our view is, again, the sidewalks on a county road are not within the purview of the board or the township to regulate. And I think the language in the redevelopment plan does not, would not require a sidewalk. But again, we are going to... Never mind, the planner has corrected me, so I will withdraw that remark.
Okay.
So I just turn it back to you for questions of the board, board professionals, and the public.
I'm going to start with our planner here and ask...
Nice to see you, Rachel. Can you just touch on the sidewalks on Landadex? I may have missed it on.
Sure. So on Landadex, which is separate from the county road that we've been discussing, sidewalks along Landadex Plaza are only provided from the east driveway to the intersection of Persipney Road and Landadex Plaza, so that most heavily traveled area there at the corner. But they're not provided west of that eastern entrance, and we're of the opinion that, you know, like the ones that we're proposing can effectively serve this site.
You wouldn't see any reason why someone would be walking from your site to the other office building in the rear? Is that...
I mean, our stance is that people are most likely to use sort of like the most heavily trafficked area, this area that's like more heavily traveled. We anticipate, you know, as our, as our traffic engineer was speaking about, you know, like a significant amount of people choosing to commute via car to this site.
Thank you. That was all.
Turn. Mr. Cantiano, you have anything?
No questions.
All right. Members of the board, Mr. Math, you've got the...
All right. I think two or three questions. First, for the setback, it came kind of quickly, so did you say that it's, it is 100 feet for most of the part? The setback's 100 feet for most of it, except for that bow in the right of way?
Yes. So this is the landscaping plan, which is maybe not the best way to look at this.
It has the right of way on it, so.
Yeah.
And the building.
So what number is this one? Because I want to mark, I want to name it for the, for the record.
Let's get you the right exhibit.
Okay. It's not marked on here. So here, Landadex Plaza makes this like little tiny bow inward about like halfway along the building, and that's the area we're talking about with that 90 feet.
It's not Persipney Road?
Excuse me. This is Persipney Road, making that little bow.
Okay. But for the most part, it's 100 feet as required by the redevelopment plan?
Yes.
It's just that one small section that has, that needs relief?
Yes.
Okay. Next question has to do with the land banking, as recommended by the Highlands. Do you have any idea which spaces will be land-banked?
So this is not really a question for me. I'm going to refer that to the engineer, perhaps.
Well, maybe there's another question I can ask you then, relative to that. Okay. How many spaces are proposed versus how many is the minimum required? Because that is the purview of a planner, correct?
I mean, that was detailed in the Highlands letter of June 18th.
I looked at it. They didn't give numbers. They just gave... Did it? Yeah, I might have missed it.
Look at condition number five.
Yes, you're right. Proposes 81 parking spaces, 25 more than required by local ordinance.
Right.
All right.
And those 25 are proposed to be banked here in the front.
Okay.
Yeah.
That, that was my question. So, but it's possible to maybe use that to kind of create some landscaping areas until they, unless they ever get needed? Is that correct?
Well, I guess it would just be law, and it would be banked, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Other members of the board have questions?
Mr. De Vich. So real quick, so that's true for the loading spaces as well, right? 15 more than required, so those will also be landscaped?
No, the loading, the loading bays will remain as proposed. There's no banking of the loading bays, only the parking spaces. The loading bays are unchanged.
Okay. Thank you.
Other members of the board have questions on this testimony? Hearing and seeing none? All right. Other members of the public who have questions of the planner's testimony at this time? If you could please come forward and ask your question of the planner. Yes. Can you, is it, is it on? Is it going to work for you?
I think, yeah. I don't think so.
It's on, but it's very light.
Okay. When you are doing a plan, do you survey the area around the area that's proposed?
So I'm actually not a surveyor. I'm a planner.
I don't survey. Okay. I mean... Are you aware that there's a national register house within 200 feet of this site?
I am.
Great. Okay. Are you also aware that although there are sound abatement things proposed for the funeral home and the school, that no kind, no form of abatement or mitigation has been proposed to protect the historic house?
Noise in specific is not really my area.
Okay. But even in terms of fencing or landscaping, there's nothing in that plan, right?
I'm here to talk about the deviations to the plan, so, and the ways in which we are seeking relief from the redevelopment plan specifically.
Okay. So that's really not your area at all?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, yeah. And in your planning experience, how often do you actually find a warehouse sited so close to a school?
Again, objection to the question. This is a permitted use. This is, there's no deviation required. That was a legislative determination that was made.
Mr. Homiak.
Yes. Nick Homiak, 26 on 9th Avenue, Lake High, Washington. Can you show on that map the buffer zone, the 1,000 feet, and 1,000 feet from the historic property, 1,000 feet from the school, and 1,000 feet from the residence?
Objection. The witness is here to provide testimony with regard to the deviations that are being sought by the applicant. So if you have a question with regard to a particular deviation, please ask it. But this is not an exercise in regards to the redevelopment plan. That's a legislative determination that was made unanimously by the council.
Well, when I asked that question before, I was told that it wasn't proper for the other person.
Again, I'm...
Who do I ask that question?
I'm not...
She said she was a landscape...
No.
Nope.
You said you're an environmentalist and...
She should have testified as a planner. She's qualified as a planner.
You have a degree in environmental...
I have a master's degree in urban planning. That's what I do.
All right. So we can't see the buffer that's required for some mysterious reason. That's two times I asked to see the buffer, and I can't...
Mr. Inglisino, you're meeting all of the buffer requirements, except for the occasional deviation that is being spoken to.
That is correct. And I'm sure if we weren't, the board professionals would have called that out.
And 1,000 feet from the historic property?
I believe, Mr. Homiak, you're referring to the Highlands warehousing guidelines.
Yeah. Buffer zone.
So that was passed after this application was submitted. The Highlands has looked at the application that we've been discussing the last several meetings, and they, they've determined that it's consistent bearing those conditions with...
The prior?
Yeah. That was in effect at the time that this application was submitted. So going forward, applications that we receive after that date, they're going to have to comply with that portion, but this one does not.
So we put the cart before the horse. In this case, special case.
It's not a special case. We comply with the law.
Well, there's a lot to be said about the law, so. All right.
Other members of the public who have questions of this testimony, of this planning testimony at this time?
Elliot Ruga, again, New Jersey Highlands Coalition. And may I ask questions about deviations from the Highlands requirements, which I understand you just became aware of recently?
Well, this witness will not answer questions with regard to deviations, whatever they may be, from the Highlands requirements. This witness is here to provide proof with regard to deviations from the redevelopment plan.
The planning board can't issue deviations from the Highlands requirements. The Highlands Council has to do that, and they've already issued their determination letter.
They, yes, but it, it sounds like they, they've insisted on certain conditions that it's not clear to me that you're complying with.
The applicant has agreed, as a condition of approval, to comply with four of the five conditions that are listed in the Highlands letter dated June 18th. With respect to condition five, there were actually two conditions in five. One related to banked parking, well, one related to parking, the other related to parked bays. And you've heard me say a lot about that tonight, so I'm not going to repeat.
What about condition number three? We've already discussed...
The first...
Beyond that, I'm not going to ask you a question.
The first four conditions, I'll say it again, the applicant has agreed to comply with.
Okay. So can I ask your planner a question about that compliance?
No. I will object to your question because the planner is not, is not here to testify as to Highlands matters.
Why not?
Because that's not the role of the planner. It's not the jurisdiction of this board.
Why? These are planning issues.
I, I want to defer to the board attorney to address this because I, you know, I'm here for the, I represent the applicant. This may come better from the board attorney.
I'm trying to just find the third condition, just to see what it is. It's on page nine.
Page nine.
Seven. It's listed as seven.
Page seven, yeah.
Oh, seven. Okay.
So again, I'll just restate what I just stated, that the planning board doesn't have jurisdiction over the Highlands Council reports, designations, deviations. In all of our resolutions, we make it a standard condition that applicants have to comply with outside agency approvals. So it's, it's the applicant's obligation to comply, as they, as their attorney has represented tonight, that they are going to comply with number three. So it's...
It seems like I should be able to ask questions about this. If they're going to comply, I'm going to ask how they're going to comply.
That, that's not the planning board's jurisdiction to enforce the Highlands Council's requirements. That...
According to this letter, yours, and your own ordinance, Chapter 205, Article 2, that you will incorporate the Highlands Council's requirements in every aspect of this, of this application.
And that's exactly what I've just stated, and the applicant's attorney has represented, that they're going to comply with the Highlands Council requirements, except with the exception of number five, which has been agreed to.
Then shouldn't I be able to ask questions about that compliance?
But we have nothing to say about, the, the planning board can't do anything about what the Highlands Council said or is going to require.
How about you ask the gentleman that wrote the letter?
He doesn't want to answer.
No, no, ask the guy from the Highlands who wrote the letter, and he'll give you the explanation. What she's saying is, we can't answer it.
For the application.
Well, he didn't write the letter. So just ask, ask the gentleman from the Highlands, Mr. Spinelli. Ask Mr. Spinelli the question.
Please don't speak for the audience.
I'm fine. And these will be incorporated in my comments, that you will not answer. This is the health and safety of your community.
As I've stated before, if you have comments or objections to this application, you're going to have a time to present your objection, present all of your comments. If you want to present evidence, then you, you will have time to present evidence and objection to this application if you so choose. But then Mr. Inglisino is going to have an opportunity to cross-examine that, that evidence and your comments and questions. Okay?
Are there other members of the public who have questions of this witness on this testimony, on the planning testimony presented?
Linda Williams, 132 Marcela Road, Persipney. I just have one, one question, sorry. You were saying that there was going to be possibly some deviation with the...
Can you pull the microphone closer?
Sorry.
Pull the microphone closer.
Sorry. You had mentioned that there might be some deviation with the, well, I don't want to say, you said, maybe, no, Mr. Inglisino said, that there might be a deviation with the water pump, the pump house or something. I just wanted to check to see, are there going to be fuel storage tanks or fuel pumps on the site to fuel all of the, excuse me, all of these trucks that are, that are coming in?
So that is not really my area, but we are... but we are not applying for that before the board. So that's not part of the plan.
Right.
Okay.
Other members of the public who have questions on this witness, on this testimony at this time. Hearing and seeing none. Mr. Anglosino.
Okay, Mr. Chairman. I think we've concluded our case, aside from a closing. So I defer to you for public comment.
All right, first I'm going to ask the board if there's any desire for a break or if we... All right, I'm ordering a five-minute break. We'll be back here in a few minutes. For the meeting of the Township of Precipiny, Troy Hills Planning Board for Monday, July 8th, we are reconvening. Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Barbario.
Here.
Mr. DeDich.
Here.
Mr. DiPiero.
Here.
Mr. Mealy.
Here.
Mr. Math.
Present.
Mr. Napolitano.
Here.
Mr. Shaw.
Here.
Mr. Stansiel.
Here.
Chairman Dinsmore.
Here. All right. Now, the time has come. This is where we're going to ask for comments from the public. This is a time where if you wish to make representations or present evidence to us about this particular case, please stay specific and on track with the case itself and the application as to why you are either for it or against it. And I would ask that people try not to repeat other objectors or those in favor of it. So at this time, I am going to ask for people who wish to come up and speak against this case at this time. If you please come up, identify yourself. I believe you have to be sworn in because there can be testimony involved. You'll be presenting information that we...
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Please state your name, spell your last name, and provide your address for the record.
Monica Barraro, 126 Northfield Road.
Could you spell your last name? Sorry.
B R A R R O Q U E I R O.
And, sorry, what was your address again?
126 Northfield.
Okay, thank you.
So I am against it. I have three children that go to Eastlake. It was very disappointing to not be notified from the Board of Education. Not a notice, nothing. We actually, a lot of the community from the school is very concerned about it, that we were not notified. Again, I moved to this district four years ago, solely based on the school district. I moved from an urban area, and specifically, we wanted to move to a suburban area. So seeing this redevelopment plan, I understand that the town has to make money. I understand that. But when you take this into consideration, if you can consider maybe vans, not tractor-trailers. My kids walk to school, and there's only one crossing guard on Allentown Road. So for us to go to Marmora, there's no crossing guard. Will that be something that you consider when this is redeveloped or, you know, if it goes through or not? Just them playing outside. I know somebody on the board last time said, if this is going to go through, will the construction be done when the kids are not in school? I think it was Nick that mentioned that. They're in school almost all year round. So are you going to do it on weekends? Or are you going to do it, you know, when the kids are not, you know, in school? That's two months out of the whole entire year. Is that going to be into consideration? My kids like to walk to school. They like to take, go on bike rides to the lake up to Precipiny Road. Superscoops is one of the ones that they like to ride their bikes to, and they like to take Precipiny Road because they like to see, you know, people on that main road. But with tractor-trailers, I will not allow them to go on there. I would not allow them to walk to school knowing because there are a lot of trucks that do cut into Marmora Road. So just, again, kids come first to us. This is the main reason why we moved into Precipiny. And bringing what I would want to call something urban to a suburban area, especially right next to a school. And I know there's going to be a buffer wall. But again, is that going to be closer to the parking spaces? Or are you going to cut down those beautiful trees where there's already a fence? I don't think that's going to make such a big difference towards the kids while they're outside. The kids love to be outside. A lot of kids have asthma, so take that into consideration. There's also a lot of schools that, years down the road, they're noticing that the schools, the emissions, you know, now they're having cancer. So again, you may be focusing on, not the long term, but us as parents do focus on the long term of the kids' health and safety. So when you do consider this project, maybe to work with the community, maybe it be a lot smaller, vans, not tractor-trailers, to avoid, you know, us having to call the office to say, hey, there's tractor-trailers coming down Marmora or Allentown. Just something like that to kind of work with the community as well, not just have these tractor-trailers and the kids and safety. That's it, thank you.
Mr. Anglosino, do you have any questions?
No.
All right, if you please come forward and identify yourself.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please state your name, spell your last name, and provide your address for the record.
Wendy Altshul. And that's A.L.T.S.C.H.U.L.
Okay, and your address?
203 Everett Road, and that's in the Lake area.
Thank you.
And I'm against this project. I can't think of a worse place to put a warehouse so close to a school. It's right, most of Precipiny Road is too late. It's just a little patch by that, the main road. But I'm also very concerned about the air pollution. We're already trapped by 46, Route 80, Route 287, and Route 10. And the effect of air pollution is on the kids in this neighborhood. I've never seen so many kids with asthma. Mine, growing up here also. I was going to also say that diesel fuel will only add to the air pollution here. And like I said, we've been having very bad air days. Every day on the news, you hear hazardous air conditions. So this is something to consider. And I realize a lot of money's gone into this, a lot of planning, engineering experts to go where, you know, to get where it's brought you already. But I don't think it's the right way to go. I also used to work scheduling freight for a Home Depot for nine years. So I've seen a lot of things that go wrong. And we really don't know what's going in this warehouse. And many stores and places, there's toxic chemicals. There's paint, there's paint solutions, there's pesticides. And boxes get broken in transit, on the loading docks. And we don't, you know, everything sounds good, but it's all hypothetical. And if some of those toxic chemicals go in the air, they are going to affect their surrounding areas. They are going to affect the kids. If it goes into the ground, it could be in the ground where these kids play. So that is something also to consider. Like I said, the traffic engineer painted a rosy picture. Like I said, I did schedule trucks. And you know what? Things go wrong. Trucks park down the street when there's bad weather, there's traffic, there's accidents. And those things have to be taken into consideration. Also, I've seen truckers come in stoned. I've seen people on the docks test positive for drugs. Those things also have to be taken into consideration. So like I said, there is a rosy picture if everything goes perfect. But nobody can guarantee it. Not that it will, but nobody can guarantee that these things won't happen. And you know what? This is the craziest part. There are other things that could go that would be of use to this community. There could be daycare, which we need. All those buildings going up on the side, if they have families, they could probably use daycare. There's after-school care. There's indoor gyms that a lot of parents use during bad weather. There's senior housing. So there's so many things that could be in place of this. And here, you know, this is really a quality of life issue for this community. And it will really make it go downhill. And, you know, it's just unbelievable to me. And I'm like, you're raising our taxes and you're doing this to us. I just, like I said, give us a break. That's horrible what you're doing. Thank you.
Mr. Anglosino, do you have any questions?
No questions.
No questions.
If you please, please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please state your names, spell your last name, and provide your address.
Angela Calabria. 75 Richland Drive, Lake Precipiny.
Thank you.
My husband was Dr. Frank Calabria. He was on the Board of Education for over 40 years. Some of those years, he served with Mr. DiPiero. My husband had one guiding principle when he made decisions on the board. And that was, if it's in the best interest of students, you can never be wrong. Putting that so close to Eastlake School is not in the best interest of students. Those trucks are closer to Eastlake School. So Precipiny Road looks at it, it looks better. But in the meantime, those trucks are so close to those kids. If Frank were here tonight, he would be saying the same thing I'm telling you he would say. You make a decision in the best interest of students, and you can't be wrong. That is not in the best interest of students. I'm kind of like disappointed. I've been in this town. My husband and I lived in our house. We bought it in 1968 in Lake Precipiny. I've seen a lot of changes. And I'm glad you spoke up because you're all volunteers. My husband was a volunteer. And I appreciate what your folks are doing, but not that. There's got to be some other thing. I know, I know you don't want to add any more students to the school system because we're overcrowded. Well, look at all the buildings that have been up here. So what would have happened if there's a couple more students coming from those buildings? You know, a warehouse is not in the best interest of students. And I hope, I pray, that you really would reconsider and come up with some... I'm not saying don't develop that land, develop it. But not a warehouse, not for students. That really is not the best thing for students. Thank you.
Any questions? No?
No. No question.
Elliot Ruga, again, New Jersey Highlands Coalition.
All right, if you please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And could you spell your last name and provide your address for the record?
It's Elliot Ruga, R.U.G.A. And the Highlands Coalition is located at 508 Main Street in Booton.
And are you an attorney representing the Highlands?
I am the Policy and Communications Director. I'm not an attorney.
All right, then, I'd have... Just in your position as the policy advisor, that's what, that's how you're representing?
I have been commenting on policy, working with the Highlands, promoting municipal conformance for about 11 years now. I under...
You can't represent the Highlands Coalition here tonight because you're not an attorney. You can speak from your position as the policy advisor.
That's fine.
Okay?
That's fine. And I'd like to speak a minute, a moment about Precipiny's conformance to the Highlands Regional Master Plan. The way that is implemented is through you guys. You're the experts. It's not like going to get a wetlands permit from DEP. There is a process for conformance. It takes about two years, where you slowly make your land use elements of your master plan through a public process, consistent with the Highlands Regional Master Plan in applicable ways. But there is a way to immediately protect your municipality if you do a referral ordinance, which Precipiny has done. That means for a period of time, until you have adopted the Highlands Land Use Ordinance, which is when the Highlands Regional Master Plan becomes legally applicable through the zoning ordinance of the town of Precipiny. Until that time, you are deferring the original decision to the Highlands Council, the referral ordinance. And that means that, and in fact, it is adopted by Precipiny in Chapter 205, Article 3, that a consistency determination from the Highlands Council, finding that the application is consistent with the Highlands Regional Master Plan, and that no application for development shall be deemed complete or considered for review by the applicable township land use board until and unless the applicant has obtained and provided a copy of a consistency determination. So there were three hearings on this application. I would argue illegally because you had not received your consistency determination from the Highlands. The point is that it goes to the Highlands. They find it consistent, inconsistent, or consistent with conditions. And the application is changed to reflect that. And then through this board process with the public, it becomes approved. It's not getting a wetlands permit from DEP. This is for you and your professionals in the best interest of your municipality to make happen. And I'd just like to speak about something else. And that is the piece of property that will be used to affect a better turning radius for trucks pulling into this, into the warehouse property. That that is, that is on the Precipiny Recreation and Open Space Inventory, that it's public park. If that's correct, that must be approved by the State House Commission. Precipiny does not have jurisdiction to grant that to the applicant. Thank you very much.
Mr. Anglosino, do you have any...
No questions.
And I'd just like to add that Mr. Ruga made statements that the board was acting illegally. However, the board received documentation from the Highlands Council that the application was not, was consistent? Is that the...
They did a consistent determination with conditions.
Yeah.
Yeah, and...
They stated after you've already had three hearings.
We've received it, and it's a condition of the approval as with any other application that we have.
Your ordinance specifically says no application for development can move forward unless a consistency determination, finding the application is consistent with the Highlands. It shouldn't be heard.
At this time, the board has not taken action on the application. We're in the process of these public hearings. We received the consistency determination from the Highlands Council. The board has the ability to act on the application.
And I would like to add that I was prevented to ask witness, the witness questions, or this applicant's questions about compliance with conditions laid out by the Highlands Council. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd just add that we had a pre-application meeting with representatives of the Highlands with regard to this application. They had no objection. I was there.
Mr. Anglosino, do you want to review that before we get a copy?
Fix the air conditioner?
No, I don't need to review it first.
Ms. Peterson, if you raise your right hand, do you swear affirm that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. My husband and I live in and own the property immediately to the north of this proposed large warehouse. The Livingston Benedict, AKA Bowers Livingston Osborne House, it's referred two different ways, is on... referred two different ways, is on the National Register, and our site is regulated and de-protected from development by a Historic and Conservation Easement, held by the New Jersey Historic Trust. So our site actually contains two historic houses, two historic barns, and an outhouse, and the state of New Jersey has an ownership interest in every one of these buildings. So, how does this proposal for an enormous 24/7 warehouse impact our property and other nearby properties? What will be the effect on our historic buildings, especially our barn, which is ten feet away from a driveway, which they are proposing to make thirty feet wide? So you can almost reach out and touch our barn from the, from the warehouse property. Will we be able to continue to live there and preserve this property? My family's been doing it since 1857, but I question whether I can live next to a truck warehouse, frankly. And it is an important remnant of Precipiny's Revolutionary War life. Demolition of 30 Lanedex will cause vibration, which can cause damage to our buildings, as well as the applicant's witness testified that it might. Now, I'm not in, I'm not naive. I know that when this was passed, I have it here, when this was passed by the council, I know that this was a foregone conclusion. All of us are kind of wasting our breath here, because this was going to be a warehouse from way before anybody got a notice, or heard about it, or saw a plan. The planning board certified this proposal was in compliance with the master plan. It really isn't in compliance, and it never was. If you have a chance to read through this, it's kind of a great document, developed by the whole town, actually. Council, when, when the council voted to make this a warehouse, most of the council was really unaware of where this property was. Three of them admitted that to me the next day, when they came and saw our property. Convenient for developers in an area in need of redevelopment, doesn't need to conform to any zoning, any limitation, from the get-go, it doesn't. So just, just to tell you, though, this proposal is not in line with the Precipiny Master Plan. Goal one, preserving existing neighborhoods. Goal three, providing buffer zones and transition areas between incompatible uses. And goal 11, to think about how the community actually looks. Now, I don't know how many of you have had a chance to get up our street or in that area. I mean, most of people travel on Precipiny Road. I have a couple of these. This is, these are the buildings that are going to be around this warehouse, and this is what the warehouse is going to look like. That's not exactly compatible here. You can pass these around, pass them down. And if you haven't had a chance to come to our neighborhood, here's a set of photos.
Oh, I think those need to be authenticated and offered as an exhibit.
Okay, good.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna mark your letter as Exhibit B1.
Okay.
It was prepared by you?
It was prepared by me.
I'll have the date, just today's date.
Okay.
For that.
And then this is, this was prepared for me, by me, in May, after the first hearing, and this was prepared by me today.
And there're packets of photographs?
Yeah. Well, it's just a sheet of photographs. This is the applicant's. There aren't as many of the surrounding buildings. Okay, so, it's really convenient that you don't have to comply with any, any zoning or any limitations if you're in...
I don't, I don't want to interrupt your flow, but, so this is going to be marked as Exhibit B2. It's a series of photographs...
A series of pictures of the, around our house, and then 30 Lanedex, and what's around 30 Lanedex.
And it's three.
Okay.
And you prepare, you prepared this...
That was prepared in May.
May 24. And you took all the photos?
Yes.
Okay. And then?
That was prepared within the last two days, and I took all the photos. Okay, so I said, I can kind of go on and flow smoothly, I think. Also, the proposal doesn't conform to the policy standards for warehousing in the New Jersey Highlands region, which we already know it doesn't, and it doesn't have to, per the testimony here. The Highland Commission reminds us that our state's water supply is crucial to everybody, not just people in Precipiny, and is dependent on careful way of use. The specific examples of noncompliance in this site have a distance of, they specify that there should be more than a mile distant from a warehouse to a highway entrance. In this case, only one of about six entrances is less than a mile, and that's the 287 South of Precipiny Road. That's nine tenths of a mile. The others are all over a mile, and on county roads, on two-lane roads, by the way. Okay, the other thing is, it's too close to a historic resource, and it's on a county road, and it is too close to a school in those guidelines. I have concerns about the noise and vibration caused by heavy truck traffic on a driveway that was designed for passenger cars to get to our office building. I wonder what will happen to the people who try to walk to reach 10 Lanedex West, which is a fully occupied office building down below our house. Those workers walk every day for recreation. They walk up the hill and down our road, but they walk in the road because there are no sidewalks there. I'd hate to see what it's going to be like when they're walking in that road when tractor trailers are coming down. I wonder how any of us can tolerate more exposure to diesel fumes than we're already getting. The sound wall at the school only covers the building. It doesn't cover the playground. Any fumes that come off of trucks coming down the hall will be on the Eastlake playground. Those of us that have lived through the demolition at Park Q, Lanedex East, know this work will involve dust, dirt, truck noise, and especially backup beeper sounds. I wonder what is going to protect us from the mold contamination, which is rumored to be in the other, the Lanedex 30, which is going to be demolished. The mold must be mitigated before demolition proceeds. Otherwise, it will be clouds of mold spores to our house, to the school, to the funeral home, and to Park Q, because we've watched many clouds of dust emerge from Park Q. I also wonder how anything is going to be monitored, because Precipiny only has one building inspector. So one building inspector is going to be monitoring all this and all the other things at the same time. There's a shortage of qualified inspectors. Demolishing construction in already occupied and established area carries an environmental impact on us, on all our neighboring properties. On our four hundred acres, we have 25 species of trees, 30 species of birds, countless plant and insect species, which are from the cumulative effort on a piece of land that's been virtually undisturbed for 200 years. We've tried to preserve a diverse environment. We ask this board to ensure mitigation measures so that the environment on our property will not be damaged. Maybe a green roof on the warehouse, that would be a good idea. All mitigation measures need to be written in the agreement with this board. So often happens. It's so easy to say, oh, yeah, we'll do this. This is a great idea. Let's put a fence here. Good. Guess what? If it's not written in the agreement, it won't be there. The warehouse, this warehouse demonstrates the desperation of towns to collect taxes and of off-site property owners to gain profit. The speed with which it's being pushed through is another reason that you should be suspicious. Developers build a property, and then they lease it. The major financial risk is to the lessy. If there's no demand, the property won't be rented. This warehouse is being built on spec. There's no way to guess what it will contain, what trucks will serve it, or whether it'll even be rented. Economic development is an important goal, but not at the expense of neighborhood consistency. Precipiny has a history of overdeveloping whatever the current plan is. First, it was garden apartments, and then it was office buildings, and now it's warehouses. How many more do we need beyond the three that are already approved, not this one, and the vacant ones on Route 10 in Hannover? Surely, there's some other more appropriate uses. Did anyone ask what they might be, what we need? And why are we not looking to the 2020 Master Plan for answers? What is so harmful about open space, veterans' housing, sports facility, and Eastlake School annex to house the kids that are overcrowded at Eastlake? 30 Lanedex, the building, was neglected by the new owners for over three years after they bought it. They didn't seem to have the resources necessary to manage the property. Men arrived hoping to mow over five acres with a 20-inch push mower. Mold damage from the flood was never remediated. The water wasn't shut off after the flood. The water wasn't shut off until it became an area of need of remediation, redevelopment. Grounds were not maintained. Security lighting was turned off. The term is demolition by neglect. An $18 million building will now be demolished because it was neglected, and the owner hopes that a new use will be more profitable for them. As the residents of the town, we expect our governing bodies, and grace, grateful for your volunteer service, to live by the documents that guide their decisions, and not by the whims of developers and lawyers. It's about us. We live here. Who wants a warehouse next to their house? Thank you.[1291.65][1291.65](APPLAUSE)
Mr. Anglosino, do you have?
A couple of questions. Ms. Peterson, you didn't really read all of your letter to the council, did you?
Yeah.
You really didn't read all of this to the council, to the, to the board members, did you?
I didn't read to the, I put stuff in, and I was interrupted. What, what is...
So you say in the one, two, three, fourth paragraph down,
Yeah.
You say, "The council voted to this warehouse in January of 2023, after a lawyer proposed adding it to a resolution under consideration in the last minute. It was not on the agenda. Council members at that time seemed unsure about where it was."
Absolutely true.
Are you saying that the council acted inappropriately and did not go through the required process to adopt the redevelopment plan?
I don't know what, I don't know what the council's appropriate process was.
Obviously. Do you understand that a redevelopment plan is not adopted?
I haven't for, I have the...
Chairman, I have the opportunity to cross-examine the witness. That's part of my job, right? That's my job, is to cross-examine the witness. I'm not badgering anybody on cross-examining. I have a right to ask questions.
Yes, you do.
So, are you aware of the fact that a redevelopment plan is approved by an ordinance and not a resolution?
Yes, I am, and they didn't. What happened?
What resolution are you referring to, when you say proposed adding it?
There was a resolution about recommending to the planning board areas in need of redevelopment.
Okay.
And two of them were on Littleton Road, over on Route 10.
Hold on a minute. So, in the redevelopment process, you understand that, that first comes the area in need of redevelopment recommendation?
I do.
At that time, there was no mention of a warehouse?
Oh, there was.
There was no proposal for a warehouse?
There was a proposal for a warehouse. And I was not actually here. I watched the tape, and the tape was exactly as the...
You're not suggesting that the warehouse was adopted by, that the redevelopment plan for the warehouse was adopted by resolution, are you?
I guess my understanding isn't as clear as it should be, but...
Well, I guess here's the heart of my question. Are you saying that the town council did something inappropriate in, or didn't follow the law in terms of adopting the redevelopment plan?
I was surprised at a town council meeting, after the public portion, and after the meeting was basically, in its last gasp, that an attorney could stand up in the back of the room and say, "But wait, you forgot areas, you know, the designation of the Lanedex property," when it had not been on the agenda. And when, I have to, oddly enough, this part of the tape has disappeared, interestingly enough, but...
All right. Let me, let me ask you one other thing.
I'm not implying that the council did anything illegal.
Okay. Do you recall that you and I had a conversation after the redevelopment plan was adopted, and that I told you that I would reach out to you
Yes.
in advance of any site plan submission
Right, and you did.
To solicit your input.
Yes, and you did solicit our input.
And we did meet in my office.
We met in your office with the Demagioses, yes.
With the Demagioses and Mr. Cote, who's here.
Yes.
And, and what was your conclusion to us after you were provided with a special presentation of the board to get your input on this plan before it was submitted?
It seemed like a good compromise. However, I noticed that none of the things that were proposed to me by the developers or by you are in the final plan. That's kind of interesting to me.
I don't propose anything, but did you, did you not say that I don't favor a warehouse at the site, but if there has to be a warehouse, this is a good plan?
I said that, sure. I'd say that now. I'm not saying it's going to be fun to live there.
I have no further questions.
Okay, good. Thank you for your time.
Members of the board, hearing and seeing none. All right. Just, just as a matter of information, at 10 o'clock, we're going to wind things down so that there may very well be another meeting on this, just to give you warning.
Sorry that I took so long, public, because you guys all deserve...[1597.21][1597.21](APPLAUSE)
All right, who else would like to come up and?
If you please raise your right hand, do you swear affirm that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And please state your name, spell your last name, and provide your address for the record.
Linda Winz, W.I.N.Z., 132 Marcella Road, Precipiny, New Jersey.
Might be better with that microphone. Might be.
Yes, I would just like to ask if there can be any provision for, I know they said that the information is on the website, but of the 2,000 families in Lake Precipiny, many of the seniors, including my parents, who've been in Precipiny for 65 years, do not have computers. They are very interested. They care about the community. They've been here a long time. They would support the community in whatever is going on, but to keep referring people to the website, or to the recording, or whatever is there, I don't think that a lot of people even know what is going on, or know that this meeting is being, is taking place. I don't know if there's any way to have something in the newspaper on an ongoing basis stating all of the things that are happening, or if we're able to have somebody from the Star Ledger or the Daily Record come and gather the information so that people can be more involved. It just seems like that we don't have a voice, or maybe we haven't had a voice. I didn't know. I mean, I'm very interested, but I didn't hear about this until right before the last meeting, and some of my neighbors, they don't seem to know about it. So that's just my concern. I think that people would like to be included in these decisions. We certainly are concerned about the children, but also the, just the people in general living in the community with all of these trucks going by. Maybe the trucks won't be cutting through Lake Precipiny, but all of these, these few main access roads that we have, Allentown, Fieldcrest, Lakeshore Drive, Lakeshore, you know, Lakeshore Drive, that a lot of cars may be cutting through the lake just to avoid all of the truck traffic. These trucks can't be stopping at a late and then picking up speed to keep things kind of flowing. So that's just a concern, but I would just say, as far as the older individuals or people who don't have computers, whether they're disabled, they can afford them, if there's some provision to just let the people in this community know so they can be supportive, I believe that more people would come out, whether they're for or against the project. But to, to just refer people to the website or defer the questions when people are asking. We haven't all been to all these meetings. I don't think it's fair to decline answering the question. I don't think it's fair to decline answering the question and just refer us to the website. Again, not everybody has a computer. And to ask for a summary is just a basic courtesy to say, "Could you please give us a summary of something or explain it in a way that we, the laypeople, can understand?" I just think that we have that right to be respected and for something that's going to so heavily affect our community. So, thank you.
That's a great question, but first and foremost, we follow the Open Publics Meeting Act. Okay, so all meetings are posted within a... They have to be posted with a 48-hour notice. Goes into the newspaper. Have to do according to law. Has to be a specific amount of time. And I know this has been on our website, and I know not everybody goes to the website, but it has been on our website. How long would you say, Nora? Because everything's there. You go on, you click, planning board, zoning board. All the meetings are there. The dates are going to be unless there's a special meeting. So and then in those meetings, there'll be an agenda also on the site. So that is one way that we do it. I mean, we could put other notices out, you know. First of all, I don't really like going into the newspaper because nobody looks at the newspaper anymore. I'd rather just do it online.
And municipal land use law also requires that it's in the newspaper and everyone within 200 feet is notified by a certified mail.
So, you know, so but we'll think of other ways as well where we can get it out to the public.
Okay, thank you. And I would just say that for the people who are within 200 feet, the community, I mean, it's going to affect all of us if we're, you know, a mile down the road. So the 200 feet, I do understand that. But there's other people concerned that are, you know, at the other areas that will be affected. So thank you. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Homayak? We're fast approaching the hour of 10:00 PM.
You want to call it quits and come back?
Well, how long do you think you're going to be?
I'm not sure, but it'll be...
Why don't you get started?
I will try to make it as quick as possible because what Mrs. Peterson said should stick to your guts.
All right. If you please raise your right hand, do you swear affirm that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name, spell your last name, and provide your address for the record.
Nicholas H.O.M.Y.A.K., 26 Oneida Avenue in Lake Hiawatha.
Thank you.
Persippany is a good location for warehouses, but not this particular location. It is not in the guidelines. And I could read you it all, but save the time. I believe Mr. Inglesino's witness, Mr. Dan Miola, when I asked him the question, "Are you familiar with the state or the Highlands?", he admitted that he did not. Warehouses are a regional issue. So we have one... Another warehouse going in Denville, an environmentally sensitive area because they gave in for taxes. We have Montville. And Mayor Soriano... Excuse me. Mayor Barbario made 30-year pilot deals for how many warehouses? All right, two warehouses.
And more to come. So, you know, I'm not trying to say that sarcastically, but...
No, well, I've heard you say at town meetings that it's either warehouses or affordable housing.
High-density housing, one of the two.
Right.
Right.
But no regard with neighborhood character or your local history?
We own the property. If we don't own the property, we can't. There's nothing we can do.
You own the community. You are supposedly...
Okay, I just... I want to answer that. I really have to answer it. So I can go into somebody's property and say, "Since I am the community, I'm the mayor. I could take your property over." I can't do that.
No, I did not say that.
Well, that's exactly what would happen. The only way I could take that property is to eminent domain it or hopefully they would sell to us with Open Space Trust for money, but they won't, not considering what the value of these properties are now with the new affordable housing rules.
I could say we should have been fighting affordable housing a long time ago because it's not affordable housing. But to say openly in public at a meeting, and I go to many council meetings...
I said it. I'm an affordable housing administrator, certified. I know. I'm just not always affordable.
You said it's either a warehouse or affordable housing with no regard to this neighborhood or the character of this...
That's exactly what's going on, not just Persippany and 28 other towns in the county. And if you don't see clearly what's going on, just look across the street, the Landex the other. That was owned privately at one time. Thirty Landex was owned privately, but the owner sold that property.
We're talking about whether this is an appropriate or inappropriate location for a warehouse.
You were just saying warehouse, okay.
And it is not an appropriate location. The traffic... We talk about the Dunkin' Donuts law. That's not a Supreme Court. That was a local court decision that has actually never been challenged. But I'll give you some scientific terms. Emergent property. Huh? Well, okay, but you're going to have emergent properties and because traffic is a complex system. So if one thing goes wrong in a complex system, it goes wrong all up and down, maybe even in the region. So one truck stop or one breakdown for a bus, a car. And just imagine 100-degree weather, hot and humid with emissions, and the children are going to be breathing this. The engineer said that the warehouse is going to be up to date for 2050 for climate, but it's out of place and time for the immediate environment and the people that are living there. I'd like to... If you're not familiar, I can give you the guidelines as evidence. And I have a couple of pictures of what warehouses usually look like when they're in operation. You'll see the oil.
I'm sorry. Did you take these photographs?
Yes, I did.
All right. So if you're going to present them to the board, then you have to explain what each of the pictures are, where you took them, when you took them.
I took them in Hanover by the Ukrainian church. I was wandering around.
Were you trespassing?
Yeah, I might have been.
Are they modern warehouses?
They're in Hanover, but...
All right. So this top, the top photo? I'll mark that as Exhibit C1. Can you tell me what the address is, when you took the photo? It's not very obvious from...
I found them in my archives because I used to work in a large postal facility, which is a form of a warehouse. And I can tell you, this is what it looks like after a while. Discipline breaks down. You're lucky to get somebody to clean it up. If you know where the dock plate is, they have hydraulic oil and the truck leaks oil. So it's all downhill.
Could you give an estimate of when you might have taken the photos?
There was some kind of Ukrainian festival going on a couple of years ago. So I'd say maybe two years ago.
In 2022, taken by you.
Yeah.
But the point is, you can't state when the pictures were taken.
They're real pictures at a warehouse. I mean, you want to take a pilgrimage with me down?
No, I prefer not to. Thank you.
All right. But believe me, this is... This isn't fantasy. This is what a warehouse looks like after it's in operation for a while. And this is all going to go into the groundwater and eventually it's going to be in Lake Persippany. Lake Persippany. But here's what I'm saying.
Mr. Inglesino, are you going to object to these going into the record?
Yeah, I object because there's no way to tell what those pictures are, when they were taken. And they're not being shown to be representative of this particular property or this particular application. They're also irrelevant to this application. The question of what the appropriate use is for the property is obviously not the function of this board. The function of this board is to consider an application that was made before it. The use as to whether or not the property should be permitted for a warehouse is a legislative function, not a function of the planning board. So to the extent that these pictures are being shown to say that warehouses are bad and we object to the use of the warehouse, this is not the appropriate place for that kind of evidence. So my objection is on the basis of relevance and on the basis of vagueness of the picture and the ability to authenticate who took it, when, what it's of. And it's not being offered as representative of this particular warehouse.
It's a trailer truck with the tires with the oil and the trash. It's very obvious what it is. It's a warehouse that's been in operation. Any warehouse. You go to any warehouse, and this is what you're going to see after it's been in operation. These are pictures of...
And anywhere, anywhere.
Not the fantasy that he's talking of. This is the reality.
I would object to that characterization. What you're doing is you're saying that your worst beliefs of what this could turn into are represented by that. And he's saying that his best expectations are different.
This is what... This is how we operate in the United States of America. Just look around. There's trash and stuff everywhere and the oil and the hydraulic, so, you know.
I think I have to agree with the objection that this is just... It's not representative of what is going to be there right now. The fact that it can be that years from now if the owner doesn't take proper care of the facility, that's not something entirely under our control.
Correct. And if I may, I think the board understands your point that warehouses can have these issues. So I don't necessarily think that we need those two photographs that you couldn't specify or provide many details about.
Would you like a copy of the guidelines or...
We could put that in the record as well.
All right, okay. And here's another thing to consider. The mayor and everybody, they've been running scared about affordable housing. We lost Waterview because of it. I could tell long stories, but I won't. Remember this. Employees are going to be working in these warehouses. And guess what? They're going to want a place to live. And if the affordable housing, if there's any science to it at all, the workers are going to want to live in Persippany. So the point is, you're actually increasing your need for affordable housing by employing warehouses in general. But the point is, it's a regional matter. There's going to be plenty of warehouses. Like Mrs. Peterson said, we overdid the malls. We overdid the offices. Now it looks like we're about to overdo the warehouses. And this particular location is not appropriate for all the reasons mentioned. It's simply not appropriate. And I'll leave it at that.
And this may add one thing. When he speaks about affordable housing, the council and the mayor is not worried about affordable housing. What we're worried about is high density. There's a difference between the two of them. High density and you got affordable housing. High density is the impact it has on your community. We'll be carrying over 462 units from the last round into the fourth round coming up, which we have to have a plan by, I think, January 31st of 2025. And if we don't have a plan in place by June 30th of 2025, we lose our immunity. So what's that mean? We lose immunity? That means we lose our ability to control zoning and planning. And the developer has all the control. I want to see affordable housing for people who can't afford it. I truly do. But now you're looking at another round of affordable housing, and they're going to give us another probably 1,000 units. That's 1,500 units, times that by four, and that's the amount in units that we're going to have to build in Persippany. We got to find the land for it. We have to have the infrastructure for it. And what the state does and Fair Share Housing does to you, they make you build new wells. You can go in a scarce resource order, which Persippany was on. We got them off the scarce... We got off the scarce resource order, and we were able to do Topgolf, Chick-fil-A, and Lifetime Fitness, which would be coming. But before that, we would have got denied because all the water goes to the affordable housing units or high-density housing units first. We had to build two new wells at $5 million each. So that's $10 million. And then who knows? Who knows how many... You know, you continue to build Persippany out. And sometimes you start saying to yourself, "We have to build more wells." How much more can the town take when it comes to our infrastructure?
We have less wells now, Mayor, because we're running out of water.
But we have new wells.
Making wells because we're running out of water.
It's very similar to our sewer system. We redid the sewer system over. We thought we were pumping 16 million gallons a day. But when we did it over, we saved $143,000 a month in energy costs. And we were only using 9 million gallons a day, which allows us to go out to other towns and hopefully... Well, good, councilman. I mean, yeah, you're still a councilman.
The other topic you should probably mention, Mayor, is that we still have 14 vacant office buildings.
Nineteen.
Nineteen now?
Nineteen. And by the end of the year, it'll be 25.
So wouldn't the high...
Let me finish. The bottom line is, the owners of these vacant office buildings are going to want to put something there where they can make a profit. And any of these vacant office buildings now, those owners can sit and wait until the courts come to see us for affordable housing in January 1st, 2025 and set new mandates for more. Now, when we say affordable housing, nobody has a problem with affordable housing. The problem is, in order to build affordable housing, you have to build four high-income apartments for every one affordable apartment, 4:1 ratio. So if they come along and say we have to build 3,000 affordable housing units, we have to build 12,000 high-income to pay for those 3,000 low-income, right? So it's 15,000 more apartments. How many more schoolchildren does that provide? So what we have been trying to do when we have reallocated vacant offices, some of them are warehouses, some of them are health center. One is going to be age-restricted housing on Littleton Road. We're trying to get as many of them reallocated for something productive to the township that does not produce schoolchildren before the courts come down with new mandates, January 1st. This is... If we turn this down, I guarantee you, the owner of this property will be waiting for the courts to come up, and he'll say, "I want to build apartments with affordable housing." And the court will say, "Go right ahead." And every one of these vacant office buildings right now, all the owners have to do is say, "They can make lots of money with apartments." So they'll wait for the courts to come and put more mandates on us, and that's what we're going to get.
So we're admitting that we're throwing in the towel and we're going to put a warehouse in an inappropriate location just so affordable housing won't be there.
No, we're not. First of all, we're not admitting that. What we're doing is...
You're talking about affordable housing. You're supposed to talk about a warehouse.
We're not doing that. Nick, can you let me finish? Here's what we're doing. I'm getting together a bunch of mayors, and we're thinking of suing the state.
You should have did that a long time ago.
And that's what we're thinking of doing. Because you think we can stop it. We can't stop it. Okay? But when you take...
Governor Christie threw it to the developers.
It doesn't matter who threw it. We're dealing with it.
He let it...
And listen, I deal with it, and I'm very... I'm very... What do you call it? I'll give my opinion. You might not like it. It doesn't matter. I'd rather have a warehouse than affordable housing because the snowball starts then. Your schools will get overcrowded because how many are going to come is going to be astronomical. Maybe not one affordable housing unit in the sense of 3, 400. not one affordable housing unit in the sense of 3, 400 might not bring too many school-aged children, but when you get to 4, 5,000, it's going to bring a lot of school-aged children. And we talked about Waterview, since you wanted to bring Waterview up, they wanted to put 600 units there. They wanted 120, 100% affordable housing units, makes it inherently beneficial use. Intervell School would have got an influx of 120 students, they couldn't handle that. So what we do, of course, we put 11 acres of land in the back, and we got Whole Foods, and we got, and, and, yep, but look what we, what we got. A million dollars in revenue, and we were only getting a thousand, a thousand a, a year.
Please, I...
And you objected to me buying that with open space.
I, I, if you have time, if you want to sit down for me, I know what...
I was there with you. I was at the meeting. We could have had that with open space, you were the objector.
You paid for something you didn't have to pay for. Now, in all due respects, let's get back to the warehouse. We should be talking about a warehouse, and you're admitting you're surrendering this neighborhood.
What did I just, I'm not surrendering nothing, Nick.
You're surrendering your entrusted neighborhood to a developer for a warehouse.
No, I am not. I, no, Nick.
And I'll leave it at that.
You can, you wish, Nick. You just said warehouses are good, it's good.
No, I, I said Precipity not...
And, and when we get to the next meeting, when we get to the next meeting, which I'm sure there's going to be one, we'll talk about the school board.
Yep.
Yeah, you're part of it too.
And, and, well, I think they, we'd rather have the warehouse. I know Mr. Inglisino and they met with him.
They make decisions for the neighborhood, the entrusted neighborhood.
Nick, Nick, the bottom line is this, we have to decide what we're going to do with our empty spaces. Now, if, if, if people want affordable housing there, remember how the snowball's going to happen. It's going to happen. And I'm not, I'm not going to sit here and tell you any other way. I've seen it happen.
A better, higher use would be affordable housing instead of a warehouse.
I've seen towns I was administrating and lose their immunity. And next you know, they got 1,000 units because the court said, you got to build that. And they, the courts pick where you go.
That's if you don't cooperate.
Well, I'm going to call for a moment here. We're going to carry this meeting to, when can we do this?
How much time do you think you need? Do you want a whole meeting?
Well, yeah, I mean, we've been, we've been at this for a while, and I want to give the public its opportunity. I guess, first of all, folks can't come up and make multiple sta, once you've come up and you've made your statement, you've made your statement, correct? Because I, I need to bring this hearing to a conclusion at some point. And, you know, so I, I have a, I have a client, I need to get to the finish line here, so...
Absolutely. Well, we'll use that as one of the rules for the next...
All right, so...
July 22nd, I have two soil moves on. Otherwise, you're talking August 8.
But July 22nd, you've only got a couple of soil movements?
I have two soil moves, yeah.
So we'll take, we'll take July 22nd.
Where, where are those before, before I, I've had soil...
Three Century and Five Wood Hollow.
Which was the first?
Three Century.
Three Century.
Three Century, that's, that's Avalon Bay.
Yeah, that should be, those should be fairly...
Three Century is Onyx.
Oh, Three Century's Onyx. No.
It should still be fairly, fairly non-controversial.
No, Avalon Bay.
If applications itself are approved, these are just the soil.
Three campuses.
Two, three campuses, okay.
Three Century is Onyx.
Yes, okay. So why don't we put it on...
I guess we'd like to carry until July 22nd.
All right, it may be late, then we may get the soil moving stuff done first.
Maybe ask community help.
All right. So I've got hands being waved at me that are going to ask questions before I, I do anything. All right, just, if you have a question, what, what do you need to know?
Can we just move it to a date that we have, like, adequately time? So if you're saying that we're going to be here late with this soil, I, I don't know if I'm ready for it.
What we're, what we're hoping is that the soil moving applications will take only, let's call it a half an hour each. So by 8:30, we should be able to start this, and that should way we would...
No.
There's really nothing we can do about it.
No.
Well, first off, we're going to set some rules that we're going to ask that people not speak twice. They're allowed to speak once, and that should limit it. They should also speak strictly to the case at hand and their, and how it affects their community. And...
No affordable housing anywhere.
That's not in our purview. We get to tell with it, but, um, yes.
Can I ask you a question?
Basically...
Chairman, I, I think if, if, she should probably come to the microphone if she, if you want to entertain that. I mean, I, I kind of object to it.
If that has to do with procedural.
Someone said that this is the place that we're supposed to bring these concerns and not to the council. Someone else said, actually, it's the council that makes the most concerns. Do you have a, I mean, obviously, it doesn't really do much good for us to be bringing our concerns here. So are we supposed to go to the council with our concerns? Do you want to apply on that, or should I just go home without it?
Well, my opinion is that the council is where the true rubber meets the road. They made the decision that this was an acceptable use for this location.
So it's already too late for anything that happens.
Well, no, there's a lot of things we can adjust.
But the use, the, the use is determined to be a permitted, the warehouse use is a permitted use on this property as determined by the council. The planning board cannot change the use of the property. We can change, they're asking for variances for different setbacks, for all the things that the planner went over, and we, the planning board can request things to mitigate those variations, deviations, but we can't change the use.
We're, we're effectively in charge of site plan, but not of use.
But mitigation, you are...
We can have a definite effect on mitigation, yes.
Can you deny the application?
Yes.
Yes, but then that sets off a whole series of other problems that we would end up fighting in court.
Yes, but we're the residents, really. We're going to have to move with your decisions. Our residents, we're going to have to...
Mr. Chairman, I, I think this is getting a little inappropriate here.
We're going afield here. The answer is, the, the council said this use is acceptable. The process for determining whether this application is, is going forward beyond that, yes, we do have a say in. But the use is already approved, and we're going to leave it at that. So we're going to meet on the 22nd. We're going to schedule this for shortly after we've done the, we're going to carry the case, assuming the board will vote on, do I hear a motion and a second to carry the case to the 22nd of July?
And just, just so the record is clear, it would be clear that, that this hearing would be carried with no further notice to the public. This is the only notice that the public gets to July 22nd at 7:30 P.M.
And all hearing of time and...
We'll, we'll total time to July 22nd, but, and, and also with the understanding that folks are not allowed to, permitted to come up and make multiple statements. They had people who came up and made their statements, they had the opportunity to make their statements.
And we're going to, yes, we're going to request that.
The applicant needs to, to get to a determination here on this application.
When people make their statements, that they stick with one statement and not try a second shot.
Mr. Chairman, Bush is going to carry the meeting to July 22nd.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so, this is your notice that, this is the only notice you're going to receive, that this meeting is carried to the 22nd.
Mr. Chairman, Bush is going to adjourn.
Have a second?
Second.
Anybody object?
On the redevelopment thing.
All right.
The redevelopment's safe for a lot of us.
I know it'll take 15 minutes.
I think that's, yeah.
These things are always entertaining.